Let's call it to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, tonight we have John Callahan, Danielle Duen, Martha Majewski, Bob Cooney, and myself, Mark Donovan. We also have our assistant manager, Valentina Mitter. We have Paul Bettinger from T N M, and we have Bill Brennan, our solicitor, as well as Lori Gatz, our township manager on Zoom. We had executive sessions on February 22nd, 2024, and March 13th today, 2024. We will also have one after the meeting tonight to discuss personnel. Shoot, what else is on here?
Potential litigation and property acquisition.
Potential litigation and property acquisition. I will get that one down sometime. Let's see. All right, we're moving right on to the regular business meeting. We have the presentation of a concept plan from representatives from Sheets, Inc. And this is for a potential application for 808 Valley Forge Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give you the floor. Thanks.
Yep. Mark Danick, Obermeyer Redmond, Max Vaughn Hippel. I'm here representing Sheets Convenience Store. They have a proposal to put a convenience store with five gas pumps at the intersection of Valley Forge Road and South White Horse Road. The convenience store itself proposes about 6,139 square feet. We're here tonight just seeking input from the supervisors on the proposed use. We're not requesting any formal professional review at this time. We're really just looking for ideas and input to see what the supervisors think. The property is in the C zoning district. The proposed use is permitted as conditional use. We are mostly compliant with zoning, except for probably signage, and there may be some issues related to the existing historical house. With me is CJ Bach, civil engineer of Land Corps Consulting, and also Jess Urbis. She's with Sheets, and she'll discuss the operations of the proposed convenience store. And with that, I'll turn it over to CJ.
As explained, this is a proposed redevelopment of the three parcels previously contemplated for development by a Wawa application almost 10 years ago, I guess, at this point. That plan did not go through. They ended up needing some relief that they were not able to get, and then through some market issues, whatnot, I guess the deal didn't work out. And we're here to try to re-approach the redevelopment of this parcel with something we feel, given the experience and the history of that, a previous project should be more appropriate, we think, for this corner. Overall, the development we're proposing now is significantly less intense than was previously proposed for the corner. We are only about 60% of the overall lot developed. The previous application with the Wawa here, it was over 90%. So we're significantly less impactful to the property. As part of that, we're also able to observe a significantly larger buffer to the rear of the property than was previously contemplated. If you can go to the second page, I did bring a picture of the second of the previous Wawa plan, just for reference. So there's the previous Wawa plan. They had the Wawa with a proposed retail in the rear and a straight five canopy up near the road. They were not successful in getting several variances, and that was some of the focus of our design, trying to mitigate the need for those variances. Some of the more important ones was the fuel canopy location. We did submit a plan earlier with this request for the meeting. That plan showed a straight six. If you could go back to the previous slide. The plan we've brought here tonight is further refined from that to further mitigate the need for that variance. We're also now straight five, and we are able to observe the required setbacks for the fuel canopy, both the legal and ultimate right-of-way. Mostly, one of the bigger things we're here to actually discuss is about the historical home. The previous application had gotten approval to demolish the carriage house, and then they were going to do some restoration work, I believe, for the historical house. But now with this new application, times have changed. We were looking for any kind of input or direction on how the township might like to see something like this happen, and how we can best accommodate the historical structure. Some other differences between this and the Wawa plan, obviously the parking spaces, they had 72, we were down to 50. More generous drive aisles for truck circulation than previously contemplated, which will also allow for some, if we get unexpected traffic, like oversized vehicles with, you know, the lawn trailers behind them. So we're able to accommodate that should they come to the site. We feel like, again, this application is a much more improved proposal for the property, but we would be remiss without soliciting your guys' input.
The elephant in the room here is that there's a Wawa with an application in sort of kitty corner from your own location. I'm assuming you're aware of that.
I was actually a part of that design in my previous work, so I'm very aware of it. I've repped it here and at the zoning hearing board where we actually did not get a variance.
Did you go to all those hearings for the?
I did not do the conditional use hearings, but I did some of the stuff associated with the zoning.
Are you talking about the Wawa that was proposed at this site?
No, catty corner.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Oh, all right. Oh, you didn't. You were not involved in the prior?
I was not involved in the Varetti application, no. No, it was not.
Okay.
All right. And I guess we don't, we don't need to know why, or what's going on, or anything, but you're aware of that, and I don't know what consequence that's going to have with our citizens. I mean, I-
Competition's good for everybody.
I live here, so I can say as a citizen, that's two convenience stores on the same intersection. That's what it is.
That is true. I mean-
It's technically three because there's one across-
There's an existing gas station, too. That is, that is true, but I think, and we feel like competition's in the interest of everybody. The property is zoned correctly for this type of use with the proper approvals, and we think it's a strong application relative to what was previously even approved for this property.
We're gonna need to hear a lot about traffic, as always, and-
We have a scoping application in the Pendot. We're just awaiting for them, their feedback. That's already been submitted. It was submitted over a month ago. They're just a little behind. But we were trying to, you know, obviously, we have a due diligence period where we're trying to get solicit as much information and feedback and, you know, to assess the viability of the project. So we asked to get on this agenda as quickly as possible to try to ascertain any of the input you guys could provide.
Yeah. I did have one other question, and again, we're not prepared to-
I understand.
-to dig deep in this, and I'm sure we'll be talking to council about the various steps that, you know, that have to be undertaken. There was one thing I did want to ask about. You mentioned that in the prior application for this site, it started and then it stopped.
Yes.
And you're aware there was litigation between the parties and all. We don't need to get into that here, but there was one thing that came up-
To some extent, I'm aware, yes.
And I'm sure you've gotten all this stuff, but there was one thing that came up in one of the lawsuits between the property owner and the intermediate-level developer, and it was, I'll just read it here. "Prior to the end of its due diligence period on November 28th, 2016, White Horse learned of the existence of environmental contamination at the property through a Phase 1 environmental study dated July 18th, 2016, and a Phase 2 environmental study dated August 22nd, 2016, that had been commissioned by," you know, et cetera. That's usually something that you'll have to deal with, but in terms of the public-
I very, yes.
-we need to know and make sure that whatever's going on there complies with all the requirements, and that there's no, you know, possibility that there's going to be a hazardous issue.
Well, to the extent that the development would, if we were to proceed, obviously, we would be compelled by state law to remediate any, you know, soil contamination or otherwise. So in fact, it'd be a benefit to everybody if we were to get involved on a property like this and redevelopment. But I appreciate your, the insights into the critical aspect. We do have a Phase 2 currently underway.
Oh, you do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. You mentioned the historic building, what we want. I mean, we don't direct. What do you, do you have any plans?
Currently, we're contemplating it just be a vacant structure. I mean, we don't actually, you know, we're-
It was a restaurant at one time. It was actually pretty good, but it's been a while. And it was a flower shop, I think, also?
Yeah. We're aware of some previous retail uses. Depending on what we end up calling it, there could be a thing that the two uses on one lot under five acres. You know, I don't know if at the very least it must be called a house, and then the relief is required, or is it, as a vacant structure, is it nothing, and then I don't need permission for the use of nothing?
It's not nothing, but-
That's certainly one of the aspects. We would need clarity on in order to move forward, because zoning, we would start with zoning, right? We already said we need similar relief to the signage relief that Wawa had gotten on this property, and potentially the two uses on one lot.
Sometimes the board or staff like to look at the current iteration of your, of an applicant's business. What's the nearest Sheetz store to us here?
I think I'd have to-
Yeah, we would defer to Jeff.
All right, she gonna speak? Okay, that's fine.
Do you know the closest one to here? Where was the closest one to Morgan? Morgantown, maybe?
All right.
There's not very many, or none, actually, in this county, correct?
I'm not trying to take over this. If there are questions, anybody else, but that's really all I had, just to make sure that, you know, there are gonna be a lot more questions. We appreciate your coming to show us what you're thinking about, and we got you in first, which is a good thing.
Yes, appreciate that.
So yeah, with that, if there are no further questions, you can proceed with what you're doing.
So you had commented just a few minutes ago, you said that there were issues with the historical house. What issues do you see?
As I pointed out about the two uses, I mean, if we, if it's a house, then it's a residential, then I got rez and commercial on the same property, I would need a variance for two uses on a lot under five acres per zone.
So Sheets would continue to own the house?
They'll continue to own the house at this point, but they have no intended uses for it. So accordingly, it just becomes a vacant structure. But we, you know, if we need relief, then we would look to it. I believe the zoning hearing board looked favorably on that relief before for the Wawa application based on the historical multiple uses on this corner.
It would be just the house?
And we're talking about the three, the former Three Sisters house, or the-
The Rossiter house.
Or the shed that's in the back?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Because there's that, there's the shed, there's the-
There's the carriage house.
Carriage house in the back that had the nail salon and all of that.
The historical commission had said that the house in the front, which is the corner property there, that house is significant. The carriage house in the back, there have been a lot of changes to it, that it's not technically a historical structure. So they were okay with that being demolished.
Isn't there actually three total structures? Is there one with a cupola, and then behind that another, or is there only two?
There's only two. There's the carriage house, and then the house we continue to show here in our plan on the corner.
Okay.
And the carriage house had gone through enough significant changes that the historical commission said it was okay.
That's where the nail salon is, and-
I mean, there were conditions, certainly we would be amenable to before, about documenting it. I think there was a salvaging clause about trying to salvage the material in a respectful way. You know, some thoughtful things were put into it, but it was permitted before.
Jumping around a little bit, for the folks who may not be able to see the numbers on the screen, I know I pulled it up here, but could you say how far the nearest gas pump is to the nearest residential structure?
Looking at the structure over here, using this as our nearest residential structure, we're calling that 200 feet. But this, again, reintroduces, as I said, potential issues with it calling it a house. Because if it's a house, then it's residential, and 200 feet from the canopy, and that would be an additional relief thing we would look to get.
Do you know roughly how far the other end of the gas pumps, do you know roughly how far that is from the, not the, not the White House, but that house there, yes?
200 feet.
That's 200 feet there, too?
Yep, both of them are 200 feet. Actually, just over.
A little bit over, but-
Just a little bit over.
Kind of finagled right in there, just to fit.
Yep. But it doesn't obviously observe, it wouldn't observe it from this structure if we were to call it a house.
Right. And what's your distance from the pump to the center line of the street?
At the top of my head, I don't know of the center line of the street. I just know we're 75 from the legal right-of-way, which exists today, and then we meet the 50-foot requirement of the ultimate right-of-way, which was actually a real struggle for the property catty corner to us here.
I take it the green band around the front by the intersection is some type of vegetation, or is that true?
Yes, sir.
We're looking out there for plannings to-
We may, in fact, enlarge that a little bit now pursuant to removal of the pump today, which was kind of a last-minute thing. We were able to figure out a way to do that, and I wanted to bring something to show that. But I didn't have enough time to massage that green space here. I think I can make this a little bigger and even bring some more green, or green to the, to the site.
I know residents are concerned about buffering with any project. Could you please kind of, obviously, this is a very sketch phase thing, but could you kind of describe the buffering that you might propose around both the, let's see, the southeast and southwest at first, and then go to the potential buffering that you might provide along the roadways on the frontages?
Sure. I would imagine, I mean, on all these exposed sides, they'd be, we would be planning with the required, planning as best of our ability. We might need to look at some averaging here in terms of this width. I can't recall if we, I believe we must have made it, because I know I didn't need relief for it. But buffering, solid fence, solid six-foot, you know, white PVC fence. In the rear, one of the nice things about this plan is the ability to preserve the existing vegetation. So I would imagine somewhere behind the parking, we would do a fence back in here. And then, again, along this entire property line, I believe we would be doing the fence and landscaping, at the very least, shrubs, you know, and a solid opaque fence.
What's the width of that buffer that you have there? Is it 10 and 1/2 feet?
The parking buffer is, I believe it's like, it's half of the required yard, and then it's like it's 12 and 1/2 feet or something, maybe 12 and 1/2?
I'm showing 10 and 1/2 on the plan that I'm zoomed in on. I'm just, I'm on the one side. On the southeastern, or south, or no, the full, all the way to the east, sorry, buffering from the next property over.
Yeah, the required buffer is 10-foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Is that enough, is that enough room to have landscape that would survive within the limits of your planting area?
I believe it can support like ornamental and shrubs, evergreens, perhaps, you know, some species. I don't know that that would be ideal for like street trees and some of the larger trees. I probably wouldn't be appropriate.
The big shade trees.
Yeah, but ornamental trees, I think you can really do a lot of stuff, a lot of great stuff with the ornamentals.
Sure. You mentioned the square footage is 6139. Do you know what the Wawa proposed?
60 here on this property?
No, the previous, where Wawa came in.
The previous Wawa, yeah. I believe the previous Wawa was one of their smaller prototypes at 4736. But the Wawa across the street here, now, that current application is at 6049, I believe, so.
So if they were 40, if they were 4736 and you're 6139, how is it you're using 60% of the property and they needed 90%?
They also had, if you can go to the next slide, I can just quickly point this out. They also, in addition to the 4,700 Wawa, they had a, what was it, 22,000 square-foot retail space down here with all the supporting parking and such.
Right.
Was that on, was that on the footprint of the existing sort of carriage house?
No, it's down, it's down here. The existing carriage house sits somewhere like right in here. It's like right in here.
They're gonna put it in the green space that they have on their plan here.
Yeah, so I mean, our plan essentially is like, this is all, we don't have any of this. Any of the stuff in the back.
Your building for the business is actually larger, but you're not going to need the second building in the back, is what you're saying?
That we're not proposing a second building, second use. The previous application actually proposed two lots, so they were subdividing it.
I know. I'm just trying to remember.
So there's a litany of things that we are considerably less intense on.
Can I ask a technical question if we're finished on that point? At some point, I heard, but never verified, that one of the lots that Wawa had under control at this site was sold.
Oh, I don't know.
I was gonna ask the same question.
No, I don't.
Is this a combination of multiple lots you're bringing together?
It is a combination of three parcels, yes, sir.
Is one of them, well, I just can't figure out how, a piece of it was sold to the rental place, wasn't it, or to?
I think that it-
It was sold to somebody.
I forget who it was.
The Wawa application currently across the street is proposing a subdivision wherein their back-
That's, I'm gonna talk about that. I'm talking about your property.
Oh, no, I'm not aware of that.
At some point, my, you know, my memory is fading about this. It's been a while. But I thought that after this dispute arose, the property owner sold one of the three lots to somebody else.
I'm not aware of that, but we-
Well, I could be wrong, but take a look. Okay, all right.
We'll pursue that with our entitlement.
Maybe it, maybe it was bought back, or maybe it was brought back. I have no idea.
Or maybe our guy tracked them down. I don't know.
Okay.
But from here, we would hope to be able to engage staff further, you know, for further kind of input, perhaps.
Well, I guess the big picture is, it's like three steps, and it's up to you to decide which first. You've got the conditional use, the zoning, and then the land development plan. Some people do one at a time, some people, you know, do everything at the same time. What is your, have you gone that far? Is that a legal question?
I would advocate, certainly, we look at the zoning stuff first and make sure that we can get agreement and consensus on the interpretation of what the house is and how it impacts whatever relief we may need. I believe that would be the prudent approach, and then maybe, and then pursue the conditional use. I don't know if it's permissible to do the conditional use concurrent with land development, but, you know, maybe that would make some sense. I would-
We can talk to council about that. We just, you know, there's all these deadlines and-
I just think the zoning thing should be flushed out, you know, first, and I think that can help us solve the mystery of what this house will be.
Okay. If you don't mind me pointing out something on the plan that's not particularly obvious when you're looking at it from a distance, there is a drive-through there. I'm just gonna verify that I'm reading that right.
Yes, the Sheets has a drive-through for, essentially, it's more of a pickup thing with their app. So it's not really a drive-through in a traditional sense. This is a new prototype for them, so the, having the drive-through kind of adjacent to the building is a, kind of a newer scheme for them. But this is the, currently, what would be proposed for this site.
Does Sheets do in-car delivery, delivery à la Sonic?
I don't believe so. Jess, I'd have to defer to you. Any, you can pick up.
But that, curbside, curbside pickup, similar to anywhere else that's doing that, but not like a sit there with like a eat-in-the-car type setup. Thank you.
Will there be alcohol at the site? We're gonna sell, are you planning to sell beer and wine?
Yes, sir.
Is it a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a license, or are you looking for one?
I do not believe we have a license yet. You'd have to obviously, no, we would need to secure one.
That's in the program, right?
That would be part of the next phase, you know, or further phases.
Adds a new dimension to this, doesn't it, a little bit?
Well, that's the reason a lot of these convenience stores now are over, the 6,000 square feet, is so that they can meet the state requirements to sell beer, or the Wawa across the street's gonna do the same thing.
Are they doing alcohol across the street? I don't think so.
I'm pretty sure. They all, they're trying to sell them at all, though. I mean, everybody's trying to. Certainly, we would-
Now, we're not gonna get into any dispute you have, if any, with Wawa. That's not our business. But, but, but we are, I am, as a resident, concerned about just, as I said, and I'm hoping that there might be some way in terms of traffic where, you know, people are going opposite directions, there's less crossover, but I'm still very concerned about Schuylkill Township becoming the king of the world in terms of convenience stores, you know?
I would ultimately defer to our traffic engineer to help us with this, but I can say from my experience that nobody goes left to get gas. You know, I don't go left. I'll go another three miles. I'll take that thing all the way down to E, and maybe just one line with below E till I find one on the right. Because I just, it's not a habit that a lot of traffic users, and again, our traffic engineer can elaborate further on the psychology of it and people's habits. Certainly for the convenience stores, they see value in being here at this location, regardless of the other application for the other side of the street, because they're essentially two different markets, you know, like the eastbound and westbound are, they're worlds apart, because nobody goes left.
Recognizing that it is currently a vacant lot, and anything is 100% increase in traffic over a vacant lot.
I understand.
I'm gonna ask-
The Wawa's application is proposing some stuff, and this is what we'll get into with Pendot, but they're already proposing, you know, the dual lefts on White Horse. So the capacity and, you know, they're built out for that. We would talk to Pendot about cost share potential and all the implications of that for our application. But we're optimistic that those improvements alone should solve a lot of whatever issues would be here within or without us.
Do you have any, I know, I know you're not here with a traffic engineer today, but I'm gonna ask anyway. Do you have any ballpark estimates of the expected delays of installing another convenience store on that corner?
I do not know anything about traffic.
That's okay. I figured I'd ask, and if you don't have-
You don't have to be dangerous, but I don't-
No, they're not about for you.
Okay, I know you're in scoping, I just-
Yeah, we were just gonna be like, you know, we said about two months ago, actually.
I was just curious if you had any, any kind of understanding of that, so.
But your traffic studies would presume that there was a functioning, you know, retail establishment of Catty Cornered, because that's, that will be-
Yeah, we're worried the Wawa traffic, if it's strong.
Can you please make sure just to speak into the microphone for minutes purposes? Thank you. Yeah, the Wawa wasn't open at that time, then it would just be considered in background traffic, so it would incorporate that into the traffic study. If it's open, then our counts would, you know, include that in it, just our traffic counts. It probably won't be open when we do the traffic counts, so it would just be included in the background traffic.
While you're still there, for our minutes, could you give us your name?
Jessica Urbis.
Is it?
Jessica Urbis.
Okay, and we have the other names for the minutes?
CJ Bach. I can give you my card, too.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have any idea preliminary what your stormwater management would be underground? Or I know you talked about there being a Phase 2.
There seems to be some. I have not investigated at any grade length. I'm confident that the previous development figured it out, that I will, but my gut was telling me that there may be opportunities in the rear and the green space to try to do something above ground, and then supplement with subsurface, you know, as you need to.
Understood.
But I, you know, we'd like to try to split it up and spread it around the property with, you know, above-ground features, BMPs like rain gardens that can be dressed up with, you know, landscaping and would promote good water quality.
Understood. And the other thing you had mentioned, too, is that the drive aisles were wide enough to accommodate like, you know, an oversized, let's say, landscape truck with a trailer. Do you have an idea where they would be parking on your site? I don't see anything designated for an oversized parking, and I know everything right now, the plan I had was about 20 feet deep.
Sure. There's, there's a bunch of, I think there's a bunch of opportunities along this outside curb. The loading zone is offset, so there is room behind there. We don't like to stripe them. It might, we don't want to encourage that kind of traffic. We know it's inevitable, so the idea is just to provide some, you know, more generous real estate for them to park. And of course, maneuver.
And I assume you'll be submitting truck-turning templates to show how the vehicles, delivery trucks, gas trucks, et cetera?
Delivery trucks, fuel trucks, fire trucks, and trash trucks in certain circumstances. The site's pretty generous. I don't know if it's a question whether or not he can get in or out.
Since the, this is a pilot program for Sheets with the drive-through, how are you gonna estimate volume for your drive-through?
Sheets?
We've seen, just for example, I mean, there's the Chick-fil-A effect where you have cars out onto public streets lining, queuing up for the drive-throughs. So how are you going to estimate those volumes?
So the drive-through itself isn't really a pilot. We have a lot of stores, and every new store we install has, we try to get the drive-through in. CJ was referring to the setup typically. It's more of a disjointed, like, you order, and then there's a gap, and then you go to the pickup window. This is all along the store building facade, so that's what's different about what we typically install. So to your main question, though, we are not like a Chick-fil-A with a drive-through service. We have done studies. There's one in Harrisburg on Paxton Street that we've done a study on, maybe last year, I think it was last July. And the counts show that the longest queue we have is two vehicles, and the most cars we have in the peak hour is 12. And that's something we can provide to you with our traffic study. We can provide that documentation to show the usage. It's more of a convenience. It's not like a Chick-fil- It's, it's more of a convenience, it's not like a Chick-fil-A. It's more for, you know, if you're handicapped and can't get out of the car, or you have a bunch of kids in the car, or it's raining or snowing, then you can go through there, but it's not a heavy use.
And you might want to stick up for this one. Understanding that it may not be a requirement, but we're certainly interested in environmentally conscious things, sustainable practices, are there any initiatives that Sheets is currently employing that might incorporate sustainable aspects to design, or anything like that in a project like this?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can definitely check with our environmental unit and such and see.
EV?
EV chargers, anything?
That's usually a third-party that comes to us, so it's not something that we would show, it's something that would maybe be installed later through a third-party.
But it wouldn't be part of your initial design?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm certainly thinking...
I believe that's how most convenience stores do it, that's true.
I mean, relative to sustainability, I mean, the rain garden approach, again, I think is a big, one of the few tools you got as a site design.
Right, well, I mean, those kind of things are incorporated because of stormwater management, so I mean, anything outside of the bounds of code, I was curious about, because I know a lot of development projects, they come in and they'll propose that, but up to the letter of the law and nothing else. But I was curious if there was anything above and beyond, because like I said, we are interested in those initiatives and...
I'll certainly take that into consideration when we're doing the design, which, you know, we're not just there just yet, but this is the good feedback that I know, I like, so thank you.
You know, like reflective coatings, solar panels, things like that. Those things are things that, moving forward, are certainly top, top of the, top-line items that we'll probably have to address in future ordinances, but I mean...
I know they have looked at solar panels and different alternative sources, but I don't think we're there yet, I think it's more of like a prototype type of, but I can definitely check into that.
But that's the kind of feedback we're looking for, so thank you.
In terms of, in this area, there's definitely a trend towards plastic bag ordinances, restrictions on non-reusable carryout. Sheets is not a presence in this county or in this area. Do you have experience operating in areas that have those types of ordinances?
I would suspect that we do, we're in the Virginia market, Maryland market, and I know Maryland does a lot of that around the DC area, so I would suspect that they do. I am just over the eastern Pennsylvania region, so like you said, we don't have a lot of experience with that here, but I could definitely talk with my counterparts and see what they've encountered.
Will this be a 24/7 operation?
Yes.
On the, on the plan that I had gotten originally, there's an area between the White Horse and the gas pumps, it's called loading zone. Is that for the gas truck to unload its gas, or is, with the drive-through?
Yes, that's predominantly for the, for the fuel loading.
Okay.
The deliveries of other goods is, I believe they just park out in here in the off-hours, is that correct, Jess? So they would, they can park, they would park out here on the side of the drive-through. And again, that drive aisle is 35 feet, I believe, so it's extra wide.
You mentioned the, that this is a superior design than the prior site.
I believe so, yes.
So, and I, and I do see the additional, you know, green space, buffer area towards the rear of the property. However, I mean, the, in terms of buffer for the adjacent residential properties, I don't see much difference between the Wawa side. I think many viewers, just their naked eye without your training, might see them as pretty comparable. Can you point out some things that you think are superior in this, other than simply the elimination of that additional retail space?
That's one of the more significant things, obviously meeting, being able to achieve the setback for the fuel canopies, I believe is a significant improvement on the plan, given the ordinance requirement and the zoning hearing boards' kind of thoughts on the matter. So I feel like achieving that setback is a critical aspect of the plan. We show 50 parking spots now, we don't need 50. We show some parking in here, similar to the previous application, it was a condition to provide parking for the house. So kind of getting ahead of it and thinking about how we might do that. We have some parkings here close to the house, you know, depending on how the conditions and the results of what becomes of the house shake out, that may not be required, and we might be able to even bring to bear more green space. But it also, I believe, they had some parking setback requirements that they weren't able to meet, and they were in the parking setback with their proposed parking, whereas this one does provide the required parking setback and the required buffer width.
So I know that for, for commercial businesses, typically there's a business model that states we need to have, you know, our business model, you know, would assume that we're gonna have this many parking spaces for this much square footage. What is your, what is the Sheets business model, how many parking spaces would be your minimum?
We like to have 42 to 44.
For this square footage?
Yes.
Okay.
So with this being a 24/7 establishment, and you're being embedded basically right in the backyards of multiple houses, do you have anything lined up or any experience dealing with light pollution?
Yes, I mean, all of our lighting would meet the ordinance in terms of glare, dark sky compliant, you know, fixtures, houseside shielding as necessary to ensure that there is no glare or light spill over the property line. And again, I, the plan may not give it its justice, but the significance of this extra buffering area was gonna, I think, help this neighborhood and how it receives this. I think it's significant, when you think about cost of real estate, you know, what's permitted by right in terms of coverage for this property, I mean, we could, we could get away with more, and we're, I think this is a, something more in the harmony and character of the neighborhood.
You bring up the lights, I always want to bring up, too, that I know noise is, oh, usually comes with the lights. The drive-through doesn't have like the aspect of like a speaker, it's like the MTO's screen but outside, so there isn't any noise pollution coming from that.
Is that the same, is there any noise, video sound played through the pumps that, at these locations?
I think that can either stay or go, I mean, I think we do it some places and others we don't.
Or options to turn it off at the end of the day or something, so overnight doesn't have that.
Correct, yes.
To John's point, he makes a good point with the light pollution. I drive by there every day, but I don't pay attention to the grade as much. And, and in my experience, full cutoff fixtures, they can still pollute nearby properties that are on a lower grade. Do you know whether the lights might, I know you don't, you haven't designed a lighting plan, I know that, but...
I drove by today, too, when I was coming in, and just kind of eyeballed it a little bit more. Certainly, you know, from a survey, you can see the topography, but you know, seeing it in real person really helps. I didn't think the topography was too, too much, I think we can pull off a fairly level site that may end up being a little lower than the road, which, to your point, I think really speaks to pole height and trying to limit pole height relative to other things, because the taller the light, I mean, the more chance that the bulb can be seen, right, so...
Right.
We actually use a lighting vendor, Sheets is paired with a lighting vendor, professional team that prepare a lighting plan, and they'll ensure that we make the, meet the ordinance requirements.
Because, you know, residents don't want to be sitting on their back porch and looking up into a light next door.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, you know, you try to limit it as much as possible, but that certainly would be a consideration.
Yes, sir.
Mark, do you think, would you like to have the public ask any questions if they want to?
I think, I think we've peppered enough for now, and are you guys good to let the public chime in? All right.
I was gonna ask about the external facade. I can't picture what a Sheets looks like, are they stone or stucco, or what are they normally?
Or made to, made to order almost, or...
I believe their typical, prototypical veneer is a brick veneer. The canopy is a red, it's got a small red band essentially around, around the canopy. It's a single, plain canopy that actually is open to the store, correct? Yes, I believe, yeah.
It's a canopy, so I have to think about that.
Right, I believe it's a slope canopy that is open to the store.
In a historical region, have they ever changed that to have a stone facade? No, the...
Is this typical?
Yeah, the idea, I think, I think Bob's driving out the idea of the area around it has a lot of historic buildings that are built out of stone instead of a brick. And so the idea might be like, if there's a building going in like that, it might jar, be jarring from an aesthetic point of view.
Certainly not, I think what the applicant would want here, so, I defer to her, but...
I was showing them, so like the bottom is stone and the top is brick, what she shows is pretty close to what it looks like today. I'm sure if there's something in the ordinance, we can look to make some modifications if that's necessary, you know, per the ordinance. When we come again, though, I can definitely bring elevation views that can show what the store looks like.
Yeah, I think the concern is generally, as Bob's probably getting at, there is, you don't want a jarring aesthetic when you're moving into, when you're driving through a historic neighborhood, and the historic buildings around there kind of have stone facades, generally top to bottom. And so consider aesthetic, I guess, is, is that your point?
Yes.
I guess, I guess the question is, we've seen businesses, Wawa's, CVS's, other, other businesses that are, that are in this area voluntarily make design choices to fit in with the community. Does, has Sheets ever done that? I mean, I think, no offense, but I think a Sheets Moore has been a rural business sort of in a, you know, kind of not necessarily in more populated communities.
Yeah, so again, I think probably in the Maryland, the Virginia areas, I'm sure they have similar ordinances like that down there. Again, it's something I can check on and see what we've done in the past. I know we've made modifications for sure to the buildings. I can look into that and see what, what we can do, and like I said, I can bring our standard design to you so you can see it a little bit closer, and then maybe we can just take it from there.
Well, I think the applicant's receptive to ultimate finishes.
Thanks, any more questions from the board? I'll open it to the public if they'd like to ask at the microphone, state your name, your address, and then your question. Thanks.
Hi, Sue Aaron Shield, Valley Park Road. On this carryout pickup thing, what do they pick up, food or?
Sandwiches.
What about the wine and beer?
I think we can do that in certain municipalities, certain places, I'm not sure if we can do that here or not.
Make sure you're talking to the manager, we can pick you up, because it's reported.
Yeah, I mean, I think the liquor sales, the beer sales is all gonna be governed by what they get approved according to the liquor license.
Okay. Have you considered donating any of your property to the Wawa's widening of White Horse Road plan?
Speak to that, actually, this plan does contemplate a dedication of ultimate right-of-way, so there is property that we're dedicating all around the property, similar to what they did across the street.
Why not, they probably paid a pretty penny for an easement from Taylor to widen on that side.
He gave the right-of-way, too, he gives the same right-of-way we gave, I'm sorry. We both gave the same ultimate right-of-way so that he can get through there, so it wasn't probably an easement, it's probably just a dedication.
Okay, and can't you keep the existing businesses that are already in the house and the carriage?
At the present, the developer is not, or the seller, there's just no contemplation of retaining them at the present, but if that were a suggestion, that's something we would definitely take under advisement.
And I do think the main issue with the house is, if you put a second use in there, it's gonna increase the parking demand, all the other zoning requirements, and we're trying to, you know, keep it as less invasive as possible. So if you do contemplate something there more than just a vacant house, then it's a whole other host of zoning issues that would...
I believe our first step would be to submit, I guess, a sketch plan to get a determination on this, on the house.
Sketch plan's optional, the deadlines don't start to run.
Until preliminary.
We review it and...
Does that seem like maybe the right way to go?
I think, we can't tell you what to do, because I want to see it briefly later on. Mr. Brennan advised us to do this.
This really depends on your preference, you can seek, seek feedback from our consultants through, through a sketch plan, if you want to have that kind of like initial feedback before you do like a zoning application.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to, right.
So, that's, that's really your preference, we don't mandate it, but we've seen it before, and I've seen it elsewhere, so it's, it is certainly...
Have you seen it be a successful way to approach a project?
I have certain...
It's a trap, Mark.
In your experience, have you, it looked good for some, have you ever seen it?
I would defer to, I would defer to your preference. Yeah, but, but it has, it has happened elsewhere, and that would be the way to get your feedback from our...
Yeah, I appreciate all the input, so, thank you.
I believe there's a question from another member of the public.
Ben Suplik, 1409 Valley Forge Road. My question is about the vacant, if you were to vacate the house, what would be your plans for ensuring that it remains an aesthetic and welcome part of the, of the development?
To the extent that the historical commission and the township could direct me on what that would be, that's, we would entertain whatever that would be, if it's some matter of restoration.
Certainly historic upkeep would be part of it.
Of course, and so we honestly don't know, like, that's why we're here, we don't know what to do with the house.
But if it's vacant, that's not a good thing for a building. So the plan is to leave it empty and vacant, which over time it will collapse on itself. I mean, that is, that is well-known about, you know, older historic buildings.
I believe part of the previous approval contemplated a condition where maintenance, there was a required maintenance agreement for the house to make sure that it didn't fall into disrepair. And certainly, we would be amicable to a similar type of a condition. So I believe that would address the long-term viability of the structure. But again, we're concerned about the implications of its use, whatever that may be, and then how that reciprocally affects us from a zoning standpoint.
Okay, do we have any more questions, comments, anything from the public, anything from the board, calling once, twice, and, all right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming, and we'll be in touch.
I have one quick question.
Oh, Lori, hi.
Sorry, Lori.
You forgot I was here, shit. No, it's just a procedural matter, but I anticipate now that you all have presented this publicly to us that we're gonna get requests for that plan. We have to get your permission in order to release them, so would, we have permission to release that drawing, and can we post it on our website?
Yes, we would give permission to release the plan.
Great, thank you.
All right. With, with that one out of the way, we will move on to our consent agenda. This would be the acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, February 14th, 2024 Business Meeting and the February 2022, 2024 Workshop Meeting. All departmental, committee, commission, and council reports are posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of February 2024. I would make a motion that we accept those minutes and reports. Do I hear a second?
Go ahead, Bob.
I'll say.
Do we have any questions, comments, would Lori like to speak on anything, or Valentina?
Hi, Sue again, I haven't seen any minutes posted on the website for any of the committees for a couple of months.
Minutes are posted on the document center, no, they're not posted like directly on a page.
Not in the agenda section?
They're all, they're all on the agenda center.
Yeah, they should, they should be in the searchable agenda center.
I just looked a couple of hours ago and didn't see any, a lot of minutes, but not many, a lot of agendas, but not many minutes.
All of the minutes that are approved are up there, you have to look over, they're a little...
Yeah, I know, I have, I have check marks on the one that...
Oh, they have to be approved before.
Yeah.
So these, now we're putting these.
Okay.
The last meeting.
All right.
Yep.
And also, I'm not getting emails um about meetings or.
If you are looking for emails about meetings, you have to re-register on the new website since it came up. If you haven't gotten an email since then, it's because you have to re-register on this website to get those updates.
Yeah, I got them last month. Um, I don't get any text messages for anything. I haven't had it since the new website went up. But I got an email, I forget which committee, last month, but nothing for any other committees at all, so.
I would defer that to staff, and if you have questions about it, give a call during the daytime and I'll work with you to um uh walk through it.
Okay.
Do we have any comments on the minutes or anything that are being approved for this motion? Anything? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's go on to the approval of the consent agenda, the treasurer's report and payment of bills. Um, we would consider the acceptance of the treasurer's report for the period ending February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. I'll make a motion that we consider that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion. Anything from uh Lori?
Yes. So for the month of February, we had a general fund balance of about four point six million. We're up about five hundred thousand um over last month and right in line for where I would expect this to be this time of year.
All right, thanks. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion that we approve disbursements dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No subdivision land development on our agenda. Onto old business. I'll uh make a motion that we consider a proposal from Bowman for conceptual design and grant application for future traffic improvements at Pop House Road, West Bridge Street, Charlestown Road, in an amount not to exceed twenty one thousand dollars. And I'll make a note that this is a twenty twenty four budgeted item. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Um, Lori or Valentina, would you like to touch on that one?
Yeah, I will just add, this was um, this was presented to the board as one of the options for potential future traffic improvements. If you recall, uh if the public recalls, the township had been going through an Act two oh nine traffic impact study. We decided to change course on that because it seemed like that wasn't going to be um an ultimately viable process for the township. So we transitioned into a traffic study for potential future improvements that the township could do. This is a next step in that McMahon or Bowman, they're now known as Bowman. They presented several options to the township for potential future traffic improvements that we could pursue as a capital project, and this was the one that the board selected. So this is just the next step. What Bowman will do is they will create um a conceptual design, and they will use that conceptual design to seek grant funding for us so that we don't spend the full amount of money going through the full um planned design unless we get the grant money. So that, that's what this is for, and we did plan for this. Um, we plan to do one of these projects to seek the grant funding and to do the conceptual design. We planned for this in twenty twenty, twenty twenty four budget.
Great. Any questions or comments from anybody? Um, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and on to new business. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Lieutenant Fitzsimmons to the position of Chief of Police effective today, March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, and um I'd like to thank you for your impactful service to the township. And um I, I think that this will be a, a great, uh, great tenure here, so. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That moves us right on to the next point. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for Chief Fitzsimmons dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, contingent upon a final approval by the Township Manager and Labor Council. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, um, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Jacob as the alternate member to the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Matt Podkowski to the Environmental Advisory Council effective March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, as an alternate member for a term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we approve RNS Sweeping Company Propo, um LLC Proposal for Street Sweeping Services dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty four, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? We do this every year. Street sweeping cleans up the gutters.
Is this budgeted?
It's uh, yeah, it's budgeted every year.
And it's also required by.
As a note, when you hear, if, if you're listening and you hear the truck coming by, we don't, don't sweep your leaves into the. We don't have capacity for all of your leaves, just the ones that have blown themselves into your storm gutters. And we watch. So, thank you. Um, motion and second made. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize exoneration of uncollectible real estate property tax liens in the amount of five dollars and eighty six cents per a request from the Chester County Tax Claim Bureau. We do this every year with unrecoverable claims. It's usually um from like uh the, like uh the mobile home parks. Uh, I don't know what they're from this year, but that's why it is so, so. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for May eighth, twenty twenty four to consider amendments to the following ordinance chapters. Chapter three twenty subdivision and land development and chapter three seventy zoning. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Lori or Valentina, would you like to discuss?
So this is related to the recodification project the township has been working on. We utilized some of the township's ARP funds for this project. Uh, we've received the draft, so we're just taking the next step in the advertising process. And the reason it's listed out so many different ways here is that advertising different, uh, advertising requirements for different aspects of our ordinances require different um intervals. So that's why it's listed the way that it is.
Land, land development ordinances are required to be advertised twice, and it's a different schedule. So we have to pull this out and do these twice, whereas some of the other ordinances in the code only require one. It's a technicality.
Yeah, and I'll just add that these are not really, I wouldn't say that these are substantive changes. They're primarily um cleaning up language and, and they really went through just to make sure, sort of a consistency review, um, and to update things in compliance with other aspects of the law. But we're not, we're not changing like zone, the zoning map, uh, nothing like that.
Great. Any questions, comments? Uh, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll uh make a motion to authorize advertisement of public hearing to consider amendments to chapter three twenty of the subdivision and land development ordinance on Wednesday, May eighth at seven PM. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we had that discussion already. Um, anybody have anything? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Authorization, I'll, I'll make the motion to authorize advertisement of public hearing to consider amendments to chapter three seventy of the zoning on Wednesday, May eighth at seven PM. Do I hear a second?
Second.
No comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to op, uh authorize advertisement of the code adoption ordinance to be voted on at the May eighth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, resolutions and ordinances. I'll make a motion that we uh pass ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh one, amending chapter fifty three of the Code of Schuylkill Township. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
This, and I'll, I'll make the comment on this one. This is a, this is to authorize a change to the reporting structure for the Chief of Police. The Chief of Police would uh under this report directly to the manager of the township and, and uh kind of clean, clean up that organizational structure. Uh, are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh nine, Valley Forge Store Authority Act five thirty seven Plan Special Study. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Yeah, Lori, if you'd like to comment?
So this is, um, and Paul, feel free to chime in here. We've talked about this several times. Uh, the sewer authority, this is a, an administrative uh move that we need to make here because the sewer authority has updated their five thirty seven plan as a result of another township selling back some capacity. Um, so in order to do that, DEP required this Act five thirty seven plan be done. We've already reviewed it. We've provided the sewer authority with everything that we, that we were required to, um, and updated our own numbers for the sake of the study. We were just waiting on some additional review letters that were um required to be a part of the plan, and we received those from the sewer authority, and those were review letters from the Chester County Planning Commission and the Chester County Health Department. So that's where we're at, and the board is just, is required to pass this resolution in order for it to be incorporated into the study so that the sewer authority can submit the fact, the five thirty seven to DEP.
Right, and I assume that the review letters had nothing contentious or red flags within them, having, I believe I saw those.
No, the, the Chester County Health Department uh had no comments uh for consideration, and the Chester County Planning Commission uh didn't have any uh comments that would, you know, make the board think that it's not worth going forward with.
Great, thank you. Um, and uh, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion, we pass resolution number twenty twenty four dash ten, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi Quinsimtenial uh America two fifty program. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
This is an initiative from the, the county, I believe, to uh support the uh America two fifty activities coming up in um twenty six. So um, any comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash eleven, appointing Ben Suplick to the zoning hearing board. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, and um, we conducted interviews for the zoning hearing board, a small group, uh, including zoning hearing board members, staff, and myself, uh, and Ben. Fantastic. Uh, so uh, we're, 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 we're looking forward to having you on the board, assuming that this passes, and uh, thank you. So any.
Welcome.
Questions or comments?
Oh, not yet.
I, I would also like to comment.
Too many people.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I would also like to comment that Matt being appointed to the EAC is here as well, so congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I didn't, did not recognize your face. So, thank you for attending tonight, too. Um, any comments or questions from anybody? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And now, welcome.
Mark, I do have a question. What um, what opportunities are there to introduce our new commission members to the general public? Do we do bios on?
That's a question for Lori.
Yeah, I just, I mean, these are people that make decisions, you know, that impact our residents and um.
We have a newsletter that certainly could be used to introduce new commission members or old ones in case people aren't aware of them. We don't have a lot of attendance at these meetings, so.
Yeah, it does, I think it'd be a nice, a nice thing also to.
Yeah, certainly something that we could, it's not something we've done in the past. I mean, all of our committee and commission members do get listed on the township website. Um, but we've not done an introduction in the past. However, um, the board did just change the process um by which people get appointed. So I think it's a perfect opportunity to look at how we could also change what we do with them going forward. So we can certainly develop something.
I mean, it's obviously if people would, or would want to do it, right? We wouldn't force you to put your.
Yeah, of course.
But it might be nice to spotlight people who are contributing their time towards our, our township and acknowledge and recognize them in a, in a different way.
So another, another thing that we could, might want to think about, too, is one of the things we did back in twenty twelve, I think it was. Um, we had a, a, a meeting at the country club where each one of our committee, commissions had a representative that showed up that talked about what each commission or committee does for the township. And they had members there and they introduced all the members to any of the public that came. We could do something like that again.
Yeah, something like a, like an open house, sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make that.
Cool. All right, um, I believe that puts us on to two-minute reports, uh, starting with John.
I'll have to defer that to Martha, I was, I was out sick the last G C meeting.
Uh, then, then we'll go to Danielle. We're, no, we're just, we're just gonna go down the line and turn on your mic when you get to it.
Um, sorry, Phoenix, Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission meeting this month. Martha and I were in, in attendance with Kurt English from Planning Commission. We um have discussed having an in-person meeting, not for our next meeting, but um for our April meeting to discuss trails. Um, we think that that would be, and I think the location is still undecided. We did, we did um offer the Schuylkill Township, there were, there was some discussion. I think some of our, our committee members would prefer to have something more centrally located, so um, there were some other suggestions made. But um, that, I think we've all been in favor of having those meetings occur in person, and um, this is the kind of meeting where we would like to have maps out and, and really discuss regional coordination.
That might be a good, um, I, I believe we have John appointed as our trail liaison, and that might be a good one for you to attend if you have time. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. Um, Martha?
Trying to remember the Historical Commission meeting.
Did it even happen?
Yeah, no, it did, it did, and Wawa was there and Wawa gave their presentation. They did not have any comments or recommendations for the board at that time. And um, that's pretty much it from the Historical Commission as far as the EAC is concerned. I wrote down some notes here. The EAC is going to be running a tree contest. So if you happen to have a really large tree on your property, um, we're gonna, they're gonna hold some sort of a contest. I think they're gonna announce it next month. I'm not really sure how they're gonna do it, but if you have a really large tree, they want you to measure it and take pictures, and they're gonna award prizes and I don't know. I just think it'll just be a really fun kind of a thing to do for everybody. The EAC did make a recommendation, Wawa was also at the EAC meeting. They did make a recommendation um to try to get EV um uh stations as part of the Wawa plan during construction as opposed to it happening later. But um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, it was explained that it's not really Wawa's decision, so um, we'll see how that goes. And um, I think that's it for the EAC. Is that it? Pretty much, yeah. Tax bills, I am the tax liaison as well. The tax bills, everyone should have received your uh Schuylkill Township Real Estate Tax Bill already. If you have not received it, please get in touch with Erin. If you have received it and it is paid by escrow through your mortgage company, it is your responsibility to send it to your mortgage company, not Erin's. So please forward it to your mortgage company. And uh, again, if you have any questions, um, get in touch with Erin. And I wanted to let everyone know what's happening with our textile recycling drive. And I wanted to let everyone know what's happening with our textile recycling drive. We're halfway through it, and I am pleased to say we have collected 250 pounds of denim and socks. Woo-hoo! I'm very excited about that. Yeah. And it's 13 boxes so far, so.
Good deal.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Yeah, no.
That's enough.
A quick reminder on the taxes, if you do pay, if you do pay them yourself, you can pay them online, it's cheaper than a stamp, it's 50 cents, so. Onto Bob.
All is well, the open space is working hard with outreach and having some good conversations with folks. Other than that, everything is good.
Thanks. Planning Commission met, Wawa presented. Kurt reminded me, did we, did they make a, did you guys make a motion?
Yes.
It was a motion to recommend approval?
Yes.
Thank you, I remember this, it was five. With all the standard, Paul has to bless it and everything, yeah, great. So that's, that's all that happened at that one, they did recommend approval, so. Great, Valentina and Lori?
I have just, just a couple things, I'll keep it brief. It's audit time for the township, so we, we have been going through our 2023 fiscal audit, and the tax collector audit is also happening at the same time, so that has been taking up a great deal of the administrative staff's time, but all's going well. The township did recently conduct a traffic signal warrant analysis study for the intersection of Dorchester and Moore Hall. We've had a lot of inquiries over the years, we've talked about it at many meetings. The residents there inquiring as to whether or not we can petition PennDOT to put in a traffic signal there to help with some of the traffic, the traffic concerns. That warrant analysis did come back that it does not meet the warrants for PennDOT's requirements, so the township is not able to petition PennDOT to install a traffic signal there. It's a PennDOT road, so we would not be able to install a traffic signal without their permission, and they have a certain set of criteria in place that have to be met, so that's why we did the study, to find out if it's something that we could even move forward with seriously considering. So that's where we are on that.
Lori, did you communicate with any of the residents who have reached out to you about that, about the results, or would you like me to?
I have not specifically, but I would be happy to. We can try to compile a list of, of who has asked, but certainly if you wanted to spread the word.
I'll take, I'll take that.
Awesome.
Is that something that's appropriate to put up on our website, under like current projects?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah. The last thing I'll just mention, and, and we didn't talk about it when we did Chief Fitzsimmons' appointment, but we will have a separate swearing-in ceremony that has yet to be scheduled, but we will work on that. I'll get with him, and we'll come up with some dates, and then we will have to discuss it publicly in order to set the date, unless we all wanted to look at calendars now, but I think we have some other outside people that we need to coordinate with, so it might be better to wait.
All right, thanks.
But I'll, I'll get with him, and if we need to discuss it sooner, we can figure that out.
All right.
But we expect a crowd, so it'll fill on its own special day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we'll fill the seats, so.
Yeah.
All righty, well, if that's it, then I'd like to invite our Chief of Police up to give an update.
In addition to the monthly report that was distributed to all of you, I just want to go over something we posted on our Facebook page, in case anyone didn't see it. Theft of mail from mailboxes is just rampant, not just in this township, but surrounding townships. Our part-time officer, Kyle Heller, ended up being lucky guy to get that investigation, and he ended up working with the US Postal inspectors out of Trudifern, Trudifern Township, Montgomery Township, and Montgomery County, the township surrounding over there. We had, I believe, forty-some thefts from mailboxes in our township, specifically targeting checks, and what they're doing is washing the checks and then cashing them. I would just urge everyone not to put a check of any amount in your mailbox if you're, if you're not gonna be there until the mailman comes. And I also wouldn't put it in the blue box outside of the post office because we know a few months back, the one down at Valley Forge was pried open, and all the mail was stolen out of that. Some of our cases arose out of that also. The case is being assumed by, they, when, they initiated the search warrant on a resident of Spring City who was the one doing all the thefts, not only did they find stolen mail, the check washing capabilities, but they also, there was ID, identity theft, there was cloning of credit cards. So the Secret Service is involved, postal service is involved. It's probably gonna end up, I, I don't know if it's gonna go federal or whether it's gonna be consolidated into a county prosecution, but all of us are, it's all gonna be one prosecution. It's not gonna be us separately from Trudifern, from East Whiteland, and all the different townships. Again, I just, either do it electronically or literally walk into the post office and put it in the slot, that's the safest way to do it. The one thing I want to say, and I, I'm humbled, and I appreciate your confidence in me to lead the department forward. I regret that it had to come at such a heavy price of losing Chief Frye. What would normally be a joyous occasion for me is a very mixed emotions as I accept the position, but I'll do my best to make you all proud and make him proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I just wanted to make a comment about one of our officers. A couple of weekends ago, one of my neighbors was found passed away by a friend in his bathtub. And Brian McCarthy happened to be the officer that, that arrived at the scene. And this friend of, of this guy in my neighborhood had said that Brian was very compassionate, he was very kind, and we were very, very lucky to have him on our force. And I just wanted you to, to know that. This, this man does not live in our township, but he just said, given the circumstances and how horrible that, what this guy had to experience finding his friend, he just said that Brian was just above and beyond what he would have expected from a, a police officer. I don't know why he would expect anything different, but he just said that Brian was extremely comforting and a help to him.
I appreciate that. We also have one a couple weeks before that I happen to be at, and what we try and do in situations like that is we don't want to leave the people alone until a family member or somebody, a close friend, somebody comes over, so we will literally do what we have to do to stay with them and not let them be alone, and help them through the process, explain things, how it goes. It's, it's a traumatic experience, but we try and mitigate it as, as best we can. I appreciate, you know, the appreciation from the citizens, and we just try and take care of people, that's our job. Thank you.
And you do it well. They all do, thank you.
All righty. Paul, we'll go to you.
Yes, thank you. Just, there's two land development applications into the township that we're currently reviewing, as well as there's about four stormwater management and grading permit applications, so there's just like a steady flow of things for us to take a look at. We're still working on the PRP plan, trying to get the survey crews out there, and put together the sidewalk plan, the digital plans, get them together so we can resubmit the PennDOT.
All right, thanks. That concludes two-minute reports, we'll go on to additional business. This is agenda items for the upcoming workshop meetings. We're, we're canceling the March 28th workshop due to some conflicts and various other things, so what do we have on our upcoming agendas?
For the April meeting, we will have the fire department.
Okay, great, that should take up most of, if not all of, the session, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah, so.
This certainly isn't a pressing issue, but the discussion with sheets about how alcohol sales might be contributing to the size of convenience store.
That is it.
Footprints.
Yeah.
Has really, during this meeting, had me think. I know that the municipality certainly can regulate alcohol sales to a certain extent in Pennsylvania. Maybe that warrants just a discussion at a, at a workshop.
That's a good point, yeah.
While we don't consider ourselves to have a lot of commercial development, potential development in the township, you know, you don't know how much space you have until it starts getting built on, and I never thought of that as a, as a factor in the sizing of these convenience stores.
Yeah, it's, alcohol sales in bathrooms, if you, if you believe it, yeah. So, yeah, ADA requirements on bathrooms have doubled the size of bathrooms, and alcohol sales are increasing the size of storage for the alcohol, so, yeah.
I'll be clear, I have no concerns about making our bathrooms handicapped accessible.
I have, I have no concerns about it, but it's, it's things you wouldn't consider, until you, until you live it and learn it, so, yeah. Any other agenda items that we'd have? No? All right, cool.
Well, we have that continued discussion on the plastic bag ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's not new.
No, it's not new, so. Okay, then right on to announcements. Representative Shisterman's mobile office hours at Schuylkill Township. On March 28th are canceled. Instead, residents are invited to attend Representative Shisterman's coffee and conversation at Cup of Dreams that morning, March 28th, at 5:00, Paoli Plaza in Paoli, from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. Also, join Schuylkill Township's EAC for an Earth Day cleanup event on April 21st to clean up Route 29. The event will begin at 8:00 AM at the Pickering Preserve, bring some coffee. Schuylkill Township's Board of Supervisors textile recycling event is still happening, as Martha noted. Drop off your clean, used socks and jeans at the township building until April 30th, please. Again, clean, please clean them.
Please, clean.
Thank you. That concludes our announcements. And on to public comment, if the fire department has anything they'd like to share, I know they're here. Yep, nope, any questions on the reports distributed by the fire department?
Breakfast was delicious.
And if any members of our public, in other words Kurt, would like to comment on anything.
I'll hear.
Thank you for attending, Kurt. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. We'll both second.
And I'll, I'll make a note before we make that mo, before we conclude that, there will be an executive session after this meeting, so please stay put. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody.